February twenty first. City Council and Council meeting. All those that are able, please rise and applaud.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and this republic for which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that's two more calls please.
Member Scott.
Present.
Councilmember Penello.
Present.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Present.
Councilmember Michaels.
Here.
And Councilmember Silman is recorded absent.
Could we just take a moment of silence for those needing help and support throughout our world? Thank you. We have anyone signed up to speak tonight?
Yes, Tom Larson.
Want to recognize Tom Larson.
Thank you, members of council. Constituent of this is someone in your two, she asked me to ask a couple of questions regarding agenda item number one, which is the issue about public hearing to amend chapter three hundred. Allow for building or property repurposed that serves a substantial public benefit. She specifically asked me what was being proposed, her and her visiting her family. I felt like it might be important to address the process of a special property repurpose, and she felt like she wanted to make sure that there was the option that the council could request that such an applicant be sent through process of planning commission and or zoning here. I think that's, I just was fortunate to come across Roy a little earlier before the meeting. I think that's certainly something that can't be had, can't happen according to.
Yeah, she's definitely right.
There may well be cases like his issues where those groups can afford another opportunity to public hearing, in which case people may support or have comments or to each individual. Have substantial public hearing to try to be as detailed, as narrow, as focused as possible, but it is, it can be interpreted. That's really my only comment. I'll report to her that everything is good.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We have anyone else to speak tonight?
So it's, doesn't, doesn't count.
Okay. All right, I guess we can, it's not really going to be the mayor's report, it's going to be the deputy mayor's report tonight. Those are still a work in progress. I just want to point out that we're still trying to get through a few problems, and they are getting resolved on a case per case basis. Once again, it's just like anything else, the city tries to roll out, it just takes time to get things correct. Please be patient, and hopefully by summer we'll have all these issues worked out with our toes. Been sharing the mayor around to his various meetings in the last two weeks. Attended the community gathering over at the county office building with Congressman Molinaro. There was certainly an interesting forum that he had a lot of topics he didn't cover on, and we certainly appreciate him taking the time to come to Portland. And that's pretty much all I have regarding the mayor's report. Make a motion for approval of minutes of last week's meeting. Bill?
Any discussion?
Oh, we're going to move to meeting minutes.
Tom, do you have any word reports?
We, word reports, we can, I don't know, we can just see what individuals have. I know the mayor had mentioned that, no, maybe we can just get away with it once a month, but we can go ahead and go through these if you want. Word one.
So, pretty quiet. A couple issues, we ran by DPW, very grateful how quickly they responded. Gave me great information, was able to pass it on, put people's minds at ease. A lot of it has to do with, you know, cleanup after snow plowing, and when can we have this street remarked? And obviously, we see some weather coming, and they were, they were able to pass timeframes on. I thought they did a great job in getting that information back to me now and immediately, so I could return it to the constituents. Was also able to go to the meeting with Mark Molinaro, thought it was a well-held meeting. I thought there was some, some things that I personally have on my agenda, specifically with the police department, being the liaison this year, that I wanted to ask him. He gave me his direct line, which I was very, very happy to have, once I had told him what the agenda was for that department, and he seemed more than willing to jump in and help, which I was very grateful for any help we can get, getting, getting some things done over there. Other than that, nothing else from me.
Very good. Word three.
So, just a couple of things. Had a minor trash collection glitch on Melvin Ave last week, and contacted Mr. Carpenter, and we got it all resolved, and it was taken care of Monday morning. So that, yep, they, and they're working on figuring out why it happened. They didn't collect the trash on Melvin Ave last Thursday, but it's okay now. And I want to compliment DPW also, Friday night, there was an accident at the waterworks on Broadway. And a car went into, as you're coming from Tompkins to brought me up, a car went into the fence at the first pillar, right there. And I emailed, yeah, and the fence was fixed Monday, so I was very happy about that, very relieved because of the animals.
Was this a wrought iron fence, or, yeah, from the beginning of it?
Yep, chain link, yep. So I'm good, everything else is good.
Word four.
I received a call from a constituent whose daughter has to cross Topkyn Street every morning. She goes over to Berry and catches the bus up to the high school from there, to junior high school, and stands in to cross Topkyn Street for five, ten minutes, and I know that, that feeling. So, once again, you know, I'd like to see if we could get, I know a stoplight is out of the question at Tompkins and Paschley, because it's so expensive, but maybe one of the yellow flashing at the cross.
What we have.
Right, right, down by we go, yeah. So one of those would be good and help her out. I received some calls about the smaller trash bins, and I let them know they're coming. I have a friend on Melvin who called me, so I said, call you, so. And personally, we were picking up the assorted trash that ends up on our lawn the other day, and found a needle, which we've never found a needle there before, but, yeah, I know you find them.
So when you look for them, you can find them all, so you're fortunate.
Yeah, yeah. That's it.
Thank you. Word five.
Word five is actually pretty quiet. Haven't received anything from constituents at this time. Pretty quiet.
Good.
That's what I think.
Word six.
As Tommy and Mary Claire spoke, Blue Moose, I've talked to them a couple of times since we had our team together about different issues, and they've been very supportive, and they corrected the problem right away. So I think it's, like Tommy said, it's just a matter of getting through it, and I think as time goes by, there hasn't been a lot of mistakes. There's only been a few, and for, I say six thousand, they said six thousand pickups they have in the city, they're pretty, pretty good. So, you only know anything I have, it's all quiet, this is Florida. Party department negotiations start March first, so I'm going to be involved with that with the mayor in twenty, that'll start up. Party department negotiations, March first. That's all I have.
Thank you. Word seven.
All quiet, just waiting for the YouTube video on trash, like, figure out what I'm doing, bro. It'll do its comments, you know, we're going to figure it out, it's going to take some time.
Just measure five feet.
Literally, I, I was doing my trash, and I was thinking of the video, so.
We all have videos.
It's coming.
All good and some.
And we are, we are wishing on little tags will be attached to these bins when something arises that needs someone's attention, or something needs to be corrected. We're just working through the final draft now. I know Roy has been working diligently to put this together, and at some point, you'll let us know when we get them all done.
A lot of those people aren't educated, I mean, it is, there's some people on the industry, I want just, it's going to take time, yeah.
Okay, I guess we can move on to agenda item number one. Set public hearing on local law number twelve, two thousand twenty-three, to amend chapter three hundred to allow for building or property repurposed that serves a substantial public benefit.
Resolved that pursuant to section twenty of the municipal home rule law of the state of New York, a public hearing shall be held prior to the common councils.
Did we officially approve that?
We moved. We moved. I didn't hear anyone state they didn't want, but we can go to and go ahead and make it official. Do a, we'll call and move these, and we'll move on to.
On the minutes, Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Okay, now we can continue on with agenda item number one.
Okay. Resolved that pursuant to section twenty of the municipal home rule law of the state of New York, a public hearing shall be held prior to the common council's scheduled regular meeting at six P M. on March seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at City Hall, twenty-five Court Street, Portland, New York, on proposed local law to allow for building or property repurpose that serves as substantial public benefit, and be it further resolved that the city clerk shall publish notice of such public hearing in the official newspaper of the city of Portland.
Do we, do we have a motion? A second, Troy. One second. Discussion.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Okay, moving on to agenda item number two, set a public hearing at local law number thirteen of two thousand twenty-three, to amend municipal city of Portland, China, and administrative code divisions related relative to code enforcement to comply with the latest New York State local code requirement.
Resolved that pursuant to section twenty of the municipal home rule law of the state of New York, a public hearing shall be held prior to the common council's scheduled regular meeting at six P M. On March seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at City Hall, Court Street, twenty-five Court Street, Portland, New York, on a proposed local law to allow for, I'm sorry, I made a mistake here, proposed local law to amend the city administrative code and charter relative to code enforcement to comply with the latest New York State local code requirements. So we'll amend that resolved paragraph to read as I read, and resolve that the city clerk shall publish notice of such public hearing in the official newspaper of the city of Portland.
I'll move. A second. Mary Claire, wait a second. Discussion.
With that, it's.
With that. Yes, Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Okay, moving on to agenda item number three. Abolish pay, abolish payroll clerk position and create payroll slash benefits manager position within the Department of Administration and Finance. We have a motion. Oh.
You get it.
Go ahead and.
Resolved that the common council does hereby abolish the position of payroll clerk and create the position of payroll benefits manager within the Department of Administration Finance, and be it further resolved that the newly created position of payroll benefits manager shall be considered a management position and in accord with the job description filed with the cit, uh, Cortland County Personnel Civil Service Department.
I will.
Okay. Question, do you declare, Troy second? No discussion.
Is the person who is in the payroll clerk position now leaving, or? Oh, yes, she resigned. Oh, okay, so.
Just, just a matter of, yeah, we, we're trying to hold back until we start to fill some of these positions, so that we don't have a void in any of our city structure.
We're going to use the word value instead of benefit here, so that we're not redundant on the benefits manager portion of the duty. This, and so how, how does this add value, and are we adding, are we taking away or adding from somewhere else? I thought there was a connection with the county on this side. Is this not happening?
We're adding as far as the Director of Administration and Finance.
I understand that.
It's a support for that position.
This, this position is like, like an H R position, it's a non-moving position, but it'll also, this person will also have other role as part of this.
Changing.
What I'm, what I'm seeing.
I'm happy to weigh in too, Seth, if you have questions. Ultimately, the person who's there is resigning, taking another position. This is a good opportunity to address some of the issues that, like you said, city faces. Now, we do have that relationship with the county.
Right.
That's the plan continuing forward.
Gotcha.
But this, the individual who does payroll deals with incredibly sensitive information, and we need some sort of human resource personnel, I don't want to use the word officer, to handle that, like those types of things are so interconnected. This is just a good opportunity to, to create that role within the city, and moving forward, you know, payroll encompasses all those things, a better manager, and the person who's there now is doing all of those things, all right. We're not taking away from any other position.
Okay.
We don't really have a traditional human resources department, or a traditional human, or personnel department, because we have that relationship with the county.
Right.
This is that chance to, you know, make that role clear, because of the things that someone was already doing.
Has this gone to classification yet?
Yeah, civil service assigned office. This will be a managerial level position outside of your answer to the Director of Administration.
So obviously, more money than, than the payroll person is getting.
Sure.
Okay.
I'm, I'm thinking, I mean, that's not like, I would suspect, you know, just to address those responsibilities that that entity would have. Obviously, that's a conversation for you folks to.
Do we, do we have dollars and cents on the adjustment?
The personnel committee has gone there.
Just saying, I don't believe that. Right, you guys, you guys sign up on this, the personnel committee will make a recommendation.
Yeah.
That will bring it back to council.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. What I'm saying, usually, what I've seen in practice is, goes to classification and you get a grade on what the range is. And so that's why I was asking. Okay, thank you.
Hopefully by the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Then, number four. Prove special events permit, sound device permit, for the overdose awareness candle vigil.
Resolved that the common council does hereby approve a special event permit and a sound device permit without fee for the overdose awareness candle vigil to be held on August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, from five P M. to nine P M., and that will be held in Courthouse Park.
Wait first, we have a second. Bill? We'll go. Discussion.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
Okay, agenda item number five, authorize memorandum of agreement with Portland County Health Department for operation of both points of distribution.
Resolved that the common council does hereby authorize Mayor Steve to enter into a memorandum of agreement on behalf of the city of Portland with the Portland County Health Department for the purpose of the city conducting, planning, and training for and operating closed points of distribution to administer medical countermeasures to city employees and their families during public health emergencies.
We have a motion. So, Bill, Troy second. Discussion.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Agenda item number six, establish property compliance certificate fee for certification reports conducted by the code enforcement division.
Resolved that the common council does hereby authorize the code enforcement division to establish and charge a fee for property compliance certifications in the amount of twenty-five dollars for residential properties and fifty dollars for commercial properties.
I'm, wait first, and second. Discussion.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Okay, moving on to agenda item number seven, affirm annual service and maintenance agreements for the Department of Public Works.
Resolved that the common council does hereby affirm and authorize a service and maintenance agreements the city of Portland Department of Public Works maintains with vendors as listed below. Do you want me to read them all?
Pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah.
These are just basically, give the public an idea of the venues that the city works with regarding our maintenance agreements for Public Works Department, so.
In the interest of transparency.
I was just going to say that.
Yes. Do we have a motion? Bill? Second.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Okay, agenda item number eight, affirm annual service and maintenance agreements for police department.
Resolved that the common council does hereby affirm and authorize the service and maintenance agreements the city of Portland Police Department maintains with vendors as listed below.
And once again, just being visible with the offenders that work for the city police department. We have a motion, a motion. Wayne, Bill second. Discussion.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. And moving on to agenda item number nine, accept and recognize donations to the Portland Youth Bureau.
Resolved that the common council accepts the donations listed below and appropriates funds to the Portland Youth Bureau operating budget accounts outlined below. Donation from Beth Jacobson in the amount of fifty dollars for the Kathy Stange Softball League and appropriated or allocated to account seven one four zero, then, point five four zero five.
Do we have a motion? A motion, Seth? Troy second. Discussion.
Thank you, Beth.
Yes, absolutely, Beth, thank you.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith.
Aye.
Councilmember Michaels.
Aye.
I'm just going to point out real quick, and it's going on the sixth term on the board here, and I don't think I've ever been meeting that there hasn't happened a donation for the youth bureau. It's just, it just goes to show you how much support they get, absolutely, well appreciated, you know, it shows people care, yeah.
Thank you so much for our, our community, the, the impact is tremendous, so.
Hey, agenda item number ten, authorize agreements with absolutely clean for custodial services at the youth bureau offices and Wickwire Pool House.
Resolved that the common council does hereby authorize Mayor Steve to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Portland with absolutely clean for custodial services at the youth bureau for a monthly amount of seven hundred and ninety-two dollars for a period beginning March first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and be it further resolved that the common council does hereby authorize Mayor Steve to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Portland with absolutely clean for custodial services at Wickwire Pool House at Sogut Park for a monthly amount of nine hundred dollars for a period beginning June twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, and ending August twentieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Do we have a motion?
I have a motion, can we table this? I don't know if this is standard practice, but just want to make sure, I would like to have a further discussion about this, maybe an executive council.
Any other thoughts, fight, you want to table for next meeting?
For, for next meeting, I think, I need more conversation versus discussion.
I mean, what are you asking for, is he the contract?
Not just the contract, but there's, there's contract, and I just want to make sure the city's in a good place to go into contract.
Okay. The contract is provided in support of that.
I understand, but I just want to make sure the city's in a good place to actually go into the contract.
This is the same public clean zero, right?
Absolutely, yeah, they've been cleaning this building for a number of years.
So they've been cleaning this building as, as a company?
And some jobs.
Yeah, I was just going to say, yeah. I was just going to say. Fire department, I believe? No. Okay. So, I do know they clean here.
I do know that.
There's past practice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I removed that.
Okay, so, sorry.
I knew you had an intense question.
Well, yeah, I know. Well, that's, that's why we have a discussion. Kind of get to the bottom of things. Okay, do we have a motion to move this? I'll say, Bill, wait a second.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Penello.
Aye.
Councilmember Lane.
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson.
Aye.
Councilmember Carpenter.
Aye.
Councilmember Beckwith. Councilmember Michaels.
Aye. Agenda item number eleven, authorize contract with familiar for fire and intrusion monitoring system at the public park buildings and youth bureau offices.
Resolved that the common council does hereby authorize Mayor Steve to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Portland with Shamira for a monthly monitoring cost of thirty-five dollars per facility for a period beginning March first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Do we have a motion? Bill? Wayne second. Discussion.
I do have a question, are they monitoring anything else that we have?
Mayor?
Yeah.
Mayor's a great contributor.
No, they monitor anything else for group fee?
They, my good old model, no, Pleasant Valley and Solbar's monitoring for five years, so we haven't done that yet. So I think that's the only other pressure that.
Is this a wireless dialer, or is it going to be a landline?
It's, I think it's on wireless, now, the reason why I think they're making the changes because of. It's, I think it's not wireless, now, the reason why I think they're making changes because of packs no longer exist.
Yeah.
They had packs.
I'm just throwing it out there, if we have any other services, you might be able to get a little for, it seems a little expensive to me for what I pay for all my properties, that's why, I mean, not a lot, like, $2, but I just was curious if it is.
Working with them and other properties, not necess, not necessarily, I really can, I, I, that's a number I can call, tip any, any of you.
We gotta have coverage, I'm like, for sure, I just, it's not, you're talking pennies, you know?
Yes.
Paul, you had something?
The bids are close to the police department or City Hall security and stuff, but we have one Sunday.
Just, I know if you group everything together, you can get it.
Yeah.
But if I do recall, this, uh, this company was the lowest bid that was presented.
I'm sort of a big, too.
Quotes as high as 65 per. Unless you know many that were higher than that, that was the big one I saw.
It was, uh, it was the one I saw, too.
Yeah, it was just, this, to me, for commercial, compared to what we were furnished with, yeah. If you talk about personalities, I'm right, instead of having all the different.
I think it's a valid question.
Oh, and for sure. I know the more you get, the usually cheaper it is. I'm fine with it.
Aye.
Move this in?
Council member Scott?
Aye.
Council member Penello?
Aye.
Council member Lane?
Aye.
Council member Thompson?
Aye.
Council member Carpenter?
Aye.
Council member Beckwith?
Aye.
Council member Michaels?
Aye.
Agenda item number 12. Authorized contract with community for access control system at the Bogue Park Building.
Resolve that the common council does hereby authorize Mayor Steve to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Portland with Shamira for installation of an open path cloud access control system at the Bogue Park Building.
Wait, first, and we have a second, Bill, second? Discussion.
So we're gonna be in this sink, new, there, that's gonna require a landline, right?
Or so, with a lot of this.
Just thinking, you gotta think about all these extra fees, you know, you start putting all these alarms in, and you gotta have monitoring, and you gotta have landlines or cellular, I just.
These are new systems, they exist.
Okay, that's how, yeah, they're just, they're already there, oh, yeah. They're just making up the service for the existing system. But the other ones, they're no longer.
I'm in the country or do they stay? Not, on the guy.
That's why we. Shut me up.
Hey. Council member Scott?
Aye.
Council member Penello?
Aye.
Council member Lane?
Aye.
Council member Thompson?
Aye.
Council member Carpenter?
Aye.
Council member Beckwith?
Aye.
Council member Michaels?
Aye.
Okay, just, uh, just to give everyone an update on where we are at, where the Director of Administration and Finance, Finance Search. I think everybody's been given, uh, a timeline attached to, uh, your agenda tonight. This, uh, this whole search is progressing much faster than I anticipated. Don't hold me to this, but I think by the end of the first quarter, uh, we may have somebody offset to go. That'd be wonderful.
Yeah, how many, how many people apply? Oh, we had quite a few, 20 some? Oh, nice, and we've narrowed it down to three, you got the.
Maybe four, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Starting interviewing. Excellent.
I want to say we're at, uh, home stretch now.
So we have a follow.
So, uh, does anyone else have anything you want to add, uh, this, uh, tonight's meeting? I guess I can make a motion to, uh, join, adjourn. First?